All right, good evening. And thank everybody for joining us this evening during this busy time of the year. It's my pleasure to serve as your at-large position number two councilwoman. I am proud to say that we as a council continuously work side by side with the city staff to move the Show Me City forward. So let me take this opportunity to introduce my colleagues. First, I'd like to introduce our mayor, Robin Ellicat. District A councilwoman Cheryl Sterling. District B councilmember Jeffrey L. Boni. And the "L" is important.
Yes, it is.
Our mayor pro tem, District C councilmember Anthony Maroulis. District D councilmember Floyd Emery. And our at-large position number one councilmember, Vashandra Edwards. Saturday, this past Saturday, December 11th, an election was held for our District A runoff election. Although our city secretary has not received the official results, I would like to recognize our councilwoman-elect for District A in the recent runoff, Ms. Monica Riley. Would you please stand? We look forward to serving alongside you, Monica. During previous at-large town hall meetings, you usually have one councilmember that provides the talking points. I wanted to do something very different. When I was elected almost a year ago, I stood on a theme of unity in the community and inclusion. I wanted you, the residents we serve, to hear from your district councilmembers, our city directors, about highlights in your area and what's to come in 2022, and also the recent bond information. You will hear from our new city manager, Charles Jackson, who had his first day of school yesterday as our CEO. So you'll hear from him as well. He will share some words, and our hard-working, dynamic city staff will present about our bond referendum and the next steps in that process, and what projects will be rolled out first. First, I would like to introduce you to our mayor of Missouri City, Robin Ellicat.
So my job today is to really introduce the moderator, which is obviously councilmember Klausser for at-large position number two. And you can tell, I was off cue today. I was sitting in the audience, so she spent a lot of time doing this. But I just want to talk to you just a few things about, it has been a year for us since we've been in office here. There's been a lot of things that we've been able to accomplish for the city, as I indicated earlier before, in several atmospheres, especially with the state of the city and all that. There's no way that any mayor, I don't care who you are, you can't do this job without the team. And that's the team that's sitting right here in front of you. It takes collaboration, it takes hard work, it takes leadership, but more so, it takes a lot of homework behind the scenes, getting prepped for our city council meetings. There's a lot of questions back and forth, and that's how we get to come up in front of you at city council meetings and make the decisions that we make. But there's a lot of work that goes behind the scenes, as you know, that it's not just one meeting that we have, we have several. Along with that, staff, city staff, you know, we have director levels, we have our assistant city managers, we have our city manager, city secretary, city attorney, and staff. It takes everyone to come together, collaborate, and work together. And that's how we move things forward. And lastly, the team, we have some more team that's with us, which is your boards and your commissions and your committees. You know, you will hear tonight from several other councilmembers talking in detail about several different programs and things that we have going on. But it takes those individuals who are residents of our city to volunteer, to get involved, and spend almost two meetings in a month to make things happen. So the city of Missouri City or any other city, it doesn't run just because of a mayor or just the city council alone. It takes every single person that's in here. And then, of course, finally, the residents, that's you, who has input. We want your input. We want to make sure that we're hearing from you, whether it's a court enforcement issue or what have you, to get the job done. And not everything that we can promise that we can deliver, but we try to do the best as we can. So it's a collaboration team and team effort to make this happen. So I just, before I introduce the main person for tonight that will be talking, and it's a large position two, Councilman Klausser, I also want to recognize our Fort Bend County Judge, KP George, who's here. And this, and also, it takes other entities, our entities of county, other sister cities, it takes elected officials of state reps and congressional districts to move a needle in Missouri City. And I'm just very proud and grateful that Councilmember Klausser had asked me to speak here today and to just welcome all of you and say thank you for being here, thank you for allowing us to continue to do good work. And I just want to wish each and every one of you a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and hope to see you next year. So without further ado, let me welcome our councilmember, position at-large two, Lynn
So in all of our excitement, or my excitement, in all of my excitement, I forgot, like, the opening, and that is our pledge of allegiance by our chief, Mike Beersden. So if you all will allow me to back up a little bit, Chief Beersden, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Oh, yeah. Please stand. I mean, the pledge of allegiance. Of what the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, chief. All right, we're going to move everything forward. I'm going to bring up our District A councilmember, who is on her way out. She's got her tennis shoes on already. But we are so proud of Dr. Sterling and the work that she's done for our city and especially in District A, so I'm going to bring her up. So if you will welcome District A councilmember Cheryl Sterling.
Thank you, Councilwoman Klausser. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us today. As you know, I am in the final days of my term in representing District A, and I would like to take a moment to wish our new candidate, who will be coming in at this point, Monica Riley, and we certainly wish you well, wish she's coming into this position, and I'd also like to thank the great citizens of Missouri City for the opportunity to have served on this council. The last two years have been quite challenging for us and this council and the staff. We've actually pulled together to continue the trajectory of this great city. Even during the pandemic, I was able to partner with the Houston Area Garrison Council Committee in coordinating the Missouri City Job Fair, where many of the citizens were able to seek employment during a very crucial time in all of our lives. This year, I had an awesome opportunity to partner with Fluid Delicious, Wayne's Barber Shop in District A, in our back-to-school drive, where we were able to serve students free food, give them free haircuts, free backpacks, and free school supplies. During the middle of the school year, I selected two schools, Hunter's Glen and Jones Elementary School, where we worked with principals in identifying the top students and honoring them for their academic excellence. We were also able to provide them with backpacks and school supplies for the entire year. On October the 30th, I was able to participate with our pet shop, Halloween Drive, in Texas Parkway, where we distributed backpacks. Once again, I got a deal on the backpacks, okay? So obviously, I had a whole lot for the rest of the year, boxes. So we were able to give them school supplies as well. More significantly, I was able to partner with the American Caribbean Association, where we were able to give kids bikes this Christmas. So that was an awesome, to see kids' faces just glowing for new bicycles. In additionally, these, the last several months, the city launched a sidewalk program in District A, where we were able to repair sidewalks and also hazardous strip walks, where they were repaired, and this had not happened in quite a while for District A. So I want to commend the staff for that as well. Moreover, I've been in constant dialogue with one of our landowners on Highway 90 in District A to develop a town center right near the Second Mile to include shops, retail stores, and restaurants. And this has been a continuous dialogue, right, Ms. Nettles? Okay. And I hope that my successor will continue to see that this happened in District A, very much needed. More importantly, one of the most talked-about priorities in District A and District B are the development and redevelopment along the Texas Parkway Cartwright corridors. My colleague, Dr. Jeffrey Boni, and I have worked together with residents and Texas Parkway Cartwright Corridor Committee. We wanted to make sure that the beautification project continued moving forward, and the council decided to form a new committee to assist both in both of these corridors. Again, Dr. Jeffrey Boni. I worked with his uncle for years. This is Jeffrey Boni. Councilmember Boni and I served on this committee with a dedicated group of citizens who provided the city with essential impact and also input. The committee members here, advisory committee members, would you please raise your hand? This is a fantastic group, because he won first, too. Okay, thank you, guys, for serving. They've done an awesome job. Okay, and keep in mind that District A and District B kind of overlaps a little bit, and District B and C overlap, so I'm pretty sure some of the things that I would say that Councilmember Boni will come back and give you a little bit more detail. In June of 2017, the city entered into a contract with TBG Partners to perform a three-phase beautification project that included the following: one, it was a medium landscape improvement along Texas Parkway and Cartwright Road with the text dot right-of-way; and, two, the installation of digital re-designs at four locations within the city limits; and, three, landscaping improvement for the Houston Community College campus and the city hall, which we refer to as the Red Carpet Run. This funding was approximately about $2.5 million, and so it encompassed all three phases of the project. The first two phases of the project, medium landscape and re-designs, have been completed. City staff is currently working with TBG on the design of the Red Carpet Run. And in late November, Public Works was made aware of another Texas project, beautification project initiative that was also under the way, coordinating with the committee as well. So internal discussions with staff working on both of these projects has led to both beautifications projects being combined for a much larger scope. So this will ensure uniformity among the corridor and potentially cost savings due to economies of scale. The third phase of the project is currently in the design phase, and we anticipate a timeline for the third project sometime in the fall of 2022. The Texas Parkway Cartwright Corridor Advisory Committee is working on advising staff on a variety of projects that will include redevelopment and revitalization along the corridors. The facade improvement program for commercial properties is now available, where property owners can receive reimbursement for percentages of facade improvement done along the corridors. And the city will soon begin implementing a Xeriscap mediums improvement along Texas Parkway as well. As property along the corridors change in ownership, the city is actively working with the partners in a meaningful way to create a lasting impact that will not only benefit the site, but will also benefit the corridor and the city as well. Another great improvement along the Texas corridor is the new, sorry, is the new landmark community center, which is located at 100 Louisiana, I'm sorry, thank you, 100 Louisiana Street. The county renovated the former Missouri City Middle School and hosted a ribbon-cutting on June 5th. This beautiful school and hosted a, oh, yeah, hosted a, and this would be used for a programs involving arts, education, recreation, celebration, and locally-based human services programs for our community. And you know, the city of Missouri City really have a lot of things for our residents. Our youth have had an opportunity to participate in a leadership program, which is the mayor's youth commission program, which I recently served with my colleagues, to assist them with election positions. This was an awesome experience, believe it or not. The kids were just phenomenal, and they were able to get up and give their speech based on why they wanted the position. And this commission was designed for the youth to represent the city, the community, and the schools, working toward the common purpose of developing leadership skills. They would be, they were actually going to be strengthening their communities and their volunteering their services and wanting to become municipal leaders. So this was an awesome youth event for our students in our community. With that being said, this culminates my report. I'd like to take a moment to thank the residents of the Show Me City and take the opportunity for serving you, an honor, a pleasure, and looking forward to being a part of Missouri City in the future. Again, thanks, District A, once again, for allowing me the opportunity to serve you and to serve this great city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Sterling. And Councilmember Boni, you get your honorary doctorate degree tonight, I guess, huh? All right, without further ado, let's bring up councilmember for District B, Jeffrey L. Boni.
Y'all can do better than that now. Jeffrey L. Boni. Doctor, yeah. First of all, I want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Lynn Klausser, for allowing me to participate in her town hall meeting this evening. And I also want to thank all my other colleagues for their service and for allowing me to serve with them. I am Councilmember Jeffrey L. Boni. I'm going to move this back, because I want y'all to see me. There you go. I am Councilmember Jeffrey L. Boni, and I represent, I'm elected by the people of District B in Missouri City, but I serve the entire city of Missouri City. When we make decisions on that day, we do it on behalf of all citizens of Missouri City, not just the ones that elected me. And I want to thank the citizens of Missouri City for overwhelmingly re-elected me to serve them for a third term. You know, I just want to, again, reiterate what Dr. Sterling indicated about one of the key priorities that we have in Missouri City and that I am very excited to chair the Texas Parkway Cartwright Corridor Advisory Committee. And I know she mentioned that there were a few members that are currently in the audience, but I want to acknowledge them by name and share with you who's on the roster for that committee. Of course, Dr. Cheryl Sterling has served with me on this committee as the councilwoman for District A. Of course, we have Mr. Erwin Henry, Dr. Natasha Wadsworth, I know I saw her in the back, LaRonya Button, Reginald Pearson, Sherri Jones, Frederick L. Walker, Sr., Diane F. White, and Ms. Sonia Brown Marshall, who is the chair of our Planning and Zoning Commission. So let's give them another round of applause for their work. You know, the creation of that committee, of course, couldn't have come at a better time. I don't want to thank Mayor Ellicat for working collaboratively to try to bring this forth, because for so many years, we've heard many individuals talk about the lack of resources to the area, as well as a lack of focus on this. And I remember when I first came on council, a few of my colleagues told me, you know what, Jeff? Texas Parkway will never be Highway 6. I said, I don't want it to be Highway 6. I want it to be Texas Parkway, and what we envisioned and reimagined it to be. And so I'm happy that we're actually doing that now. And as was stated by Dr. Sterling, we have some key initiatives that we're doing through this committee right now that you'll start to see come to fruition. We have a Xeriscap beautification program that will actually start and should be completed by the end of July, right, TW? All right. Putting them on the spot. By the end of July, and that will encompass some beautification efforts from a Xeriscap beautification standpoint, starting at Highway 90A, where the monument introduces you to the city, or that portion of coming off of Texas Parkway from the railroad tracks all the way down to Turtle Creek Drive, where the Family Dollar is in Roan Park. So that is extremely exciting. The committee has been working extremely long and hard on trying to do the right things and us to try to find the resources, the requisite resources, to take care of that. Also, another thing, Dr. Sterling talked about how that's going to coincide with our Red Carpet Run that is going to take place right here in front of City Hall and HCC. It's going to be beautiful. Also, we also have two other programs that we have a part of this, $1.5 million that we had reallocated and dedicated through the fiscal year '22 budget to go to Texas Parkway specifically. That, one being the facade improvement program that Councilwoman Sterling talked about for commercial properties. As part of that, eligible facade improvements include painting, signage, patios or decks, exterior lighting, parking lot repaving, and much more. The maximum reimbursement for each property that they can receive if they actually qualify through this program, through an application process, is $200,000. And each property owner interested in this program will need to go through that application process, and that application can be found online at our Missouri City website. We're also working on a restaurant program to encourage additional restaurants along the Texas Parkway Cartwright Corridor to come to the area. It's more like a restaurant recruitment program. While the program itself is still being finalized, the overall concept is to lower the cost of entering the market along the corridor by reimbursing costs related to kitchen, restaurant, and patio finish out and build-out. So we're excited about that. In District, in the District or close to the District, we've been working with trying to improve Hunter's Glen Park and Hunter's Glen Park Trail. The citizen surveys consistently identify Missouri City Trails as a top priority. Most of the trails consist of decomposed granite, or also known as DG, for surface material. This type of material requires frequent maintenance, and moisture renders DG trails nearly unstable for several days after the rain. To improve usability and reduce maintenance, the city plans to convert some of our highly most, highly-used trails from DG to concrete. We call this conversion our Park Path Program. Hunter's Glen Park is such a trail. The Community Development Action Committee, excuse me, yeah, the Community Development Advocacy Committee is the one that I chair as well. We oversee the CDBG dollars, the federal dollars we receive from HUD. We recently recommended this project for federal funding, and currently, we're awaiting final approval of that funding to convert this trail from DG to concrete, which will cost about $226,000. Another such trail is Hunter's Glen Jogging Trail. It stretches east from the park maintenance shop right here on Texas Parkway, past Hunter's Trail Park de Fondre. It then turns south to Independence and Lexington before turning west to Texas Parkway at Court Road, where the Domino's Pizza is and the fire station. The final section turns north, leading back to Independence Boulevard, across from Hunter's Glen Park. This project is planned to be funded from multiple sources, including the November 2021 bond issue that voters approved by nearly 70% this past November. Currently under construction in District B is the New Quest Town Center 2. This development includes a state-of-the-art Cinemark Theater, 300,000-square-foot mixed-use commercial facility with pavilions, patio, and grassy lounge space. As you know, Fire Station Number 6 is under construction as well and almost completed. The facility is located within the park's edge subdivision off of Lake Olympia Parkway. This structure will be approximately 16,752 square feet and a two-story building, and it's over 20% completed, and it's projected to be completed, weather permitting, by the first quarter of this year. Also, housing at this facility will be the fire headquarters. We also have in the, everybody know where the OHEB was, right there off of Cartwright? Yes? Well, right there, we have some great discussion that's been going on. One thing that has occurred that we'll start to see come to fruition here soon, we have a new barber academy that's coming to that area. It's been sold to a gentleman named Errol Shaw, who's opening that college, and he owns several successful barber colleges and barber shops across the greater Houston area. Also, right here where the Shipley's Donuts is, is called Grand Park Center. They're working with TURS Number 1 to request reimbursements of up to $400,000 for major facade improvements for the center. The TURS Board recently approved the improvements, and the agreement will be coming to our Missouri City Development Authority soon. I also want to share a brief amount of information about group homes. As you know, I went to Austin to testify several times, including this past year, and we were able to get some legislation on the books whereby we have a study completed. And once we get the information from those studies, we can see what changes need to be made so we can address the longstanding issue and ever-increasing issue of group homes in this city. One other thing that I'm excited about, when I joined the city council, I wanted to ensure that we were ensuring local businesses and minority women businesses were being equitably given opportunities here, and I pushed for, what we needed was a disparity study to see where we are, not to assume, but to actually know. Well, thanks to funds from the American Rescue Plan, we actually will be doing a disparity study, which will determine whether a government entity like ours, either in the past or currently, engages in exclusionary practices in the solicitation and award of contracts to those types of businesses. The study will determine if there's a disparity between the availability of firms and the utilization of those firms in the city's market area. Few other things as I step away. The other portion of that old HEB site, we've been in contact with the, I've been in contact with the owner, Mr. Murray, and his realtor. Set up a meeting with our Economic Development Director, Aubrey Nettles, and our Development Services Director, Jennifer Thomas Gomez, and they're really aggressively looking to move forward to improving that site, a site that's been abandoned since 2012. I mean, excuse me, it's been over 20 years that that site has been abandoned. Also, we've been in discussions about the Old Kroger location. There's more details surrounding that. We've been working collaboratively, the mayor and I, and several of our other stakeholders and staff, on a Missouri City downtown concept. And also, the old movie theater site has recently been sold, and I've been working directly with the consultant representing that client. And, of course, they just met with the new city manager, and, of course, with Aubrey, our Economic Development Director, and I'm excited about many of the things that we're looking to do to improve, something that's been a thorn in our side and something that people use as a campaign slogan every time they run, that we're going to do something about the movie theater. Lastly, as I close, we have a new medical facility that's currently under construction right there across from Futurama, next to Auto Max. That'll be a 16,000-square-foot medical facility. And there's a new subdivision coming to District B called Arcadia Homes. It's a 27.7-acre, single-family residential community with 113 lots. The Parkland dedication was submitted and went to the Parks Board in planning and zoning, and we're awaiting final plat approval. There'll be over five acres of drainage proposed on the site, and the nearby parks are Roan Park to the west and Community Park to the south. There's so much more I could sit here and talk about, but it's not my meeting. It's Councilwoman Klausser's, but I thank her for the opportunity, for giving us an opportunity to share tonight.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dr. Boni. As you can see, some of the themes that Dr. Sterling talked about and Jeff Boni talked about, we keep hearing just the wonderful things that are going on in District A and District B, and, you know, we're moving the city forward. It may not happen when we want it to happen, but it is happening and it will happen. So thank you all for your patience. Going down the alphabet, we've gotten to A, we've gotten to B, and now we are going to our mayor pro tem, Anthony Maroulis, who says C is the place to be.
That's right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Councilmember Klausser, for hosting this. Thank you, Dr. Sterling and Jeffrey Boni, thank you for all your leadership. We're doing some great things here in Missouri City, and I want to extend a couple more comments around that. I'm currently your mayor pro tem, councilmember for District C, and I also serve as your chair for the Economic Development Committee, and it's an exciting committee. Aubrey, on board. We have some great things that we'll announce here shortly. District C continues to grow. We continue to do great things for these new businesses, to include some ribbon-cutting. Just this weekend, we did My Spice Grocery. We have a doghouse, hot dog place, coming on Highway 6. We have two Dutch Brothers, which my daughters would probably be at all the time. It's the latest and greatest coffee shop. We have a Sea Lion Swim School on Sienna Ranch, a Sippin' Sweets, which I'm sure I'll be there for a couple nights myself, and those are just- myself, and those are just a few to name. Today, we actually, the mayor and I, attended a grand opening for a new ER Urgent Center on Highway 6 near Colonial Lakes. So, great, great growth, and what I enjoy about it is being there on the day of the opening and doing ribbon cutting. So, if any of you own businesses or know of a new business coming, please let us know. Aubrey and her team and us will come out and will be a part of that great celebration. Currently working with, so in District C, we have Tank City, which has got the corner of Highway 6 and Colonial Lakes. So, Aubrey and I and the team are collaborating with them. What we want to try to do is kind of direct us, direct that team to what really will work there. So, we're doing an analysis through OCL to determine what would be the best development there at that facility, the best uses. As I look back to last year and I thought about this meeting, I said, what did we accomplish? And in my thoughts, I thought about us being servants. We served this community during the freeze. We served this community during a lot of different things that happened, COVID, and just a lot of different things, and I, I really appreciated everyone's efforts around that. You can see some of the clean savers, cases of water and food drives, and we even did a food drive with Councilmember Edwards and team this Saturday. And that's what last year was about, being a servant. In fact, last Friday, the mayor and I actually attended a, the Fort Ben Family Promise, where the BAPS Temple donated $10,000 to the Fort Ben Family Promise. For those who don't know what the Fort Ben Family Promise is, it's a homeless shelter for families that are chronic, not chronic, they're episodic, and they help six families at a time. So, we delivered a $10,000 check to that place, and it was just kind of emotional. But I want to thank the BAPS Charity for doing that, and this Saturday, we actually are doing something special. I'll mention that here shortly. This year, we also celebrated the 152nd year at St. John's Missionary Church. Jeffrey Boni and I actually attended that service on a Sunday. What a great day. St. John's Missionary Church is a historical marker here in the city. Fort Ben County has actually recognized it, and thank you, Jeffrey, for being there. And council members, if you've not been, please, please go visit Pastor Rivers. I mentioned a little bit about Niagara and all the things we did around the ice storm, but I want to take a moment just to thank the mayor. He recognized that that was a problem. He recognized that we were going to be in a really tough spot, so communication was key to the community, and we set up daily updates. And our KP George was there, Ron Reynolds was there, and we were constantly updating the community. I want to thank you for your leadership, mayor. I also want to thank the staff. During that time, we had public works, we had fire, police, we had COVID spreading, we had everything going, but we delivered to the community, and I want to thank you guys, the staff, for everything you've done. Lastly, on Saturday, December 18th, I would like to invite you to the annual UPS Team Drop-Off at Fort Ben Family Promise. They're located at 4645 Cartwright Road. So, what happens is the UPS drivers and Constable Daryl Smith will actually load up a bunch of toys and deliver it by escort straight to the front of Fort Ben Family Promise, and kids are waiting there. They're just all happy and waiting for Santa to show up, and so it's a great event, something I attend every year and donate to and fully support. So, I ask you guys to come out and support that cause as well. My closing statements are, thank you. Thank you for being patient with us. We've gone through some ups and downs, but we're definitely heading in the right direction. And as I leave tonight, I'm going to leave early. Jason Landry has been missing for one year. He's the son of the pastor of Southminster Church at Cartwright and Murphy Road, so I'll go attend the vigil, but keep him and his family in your prayers. Thank you.[841.62][841.62](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Marulis, and I know you've got to, give the Landry family our best, please. So, C is the place to be, but then Floyd Emery always says, D is the place to be. So, I'm going to bring up Floyd Emery, Councilmember Floyd Emery of District D.[865.47][865.47](APPLAUSE)
And I'm not from Louisiana, so I can't say D place to be, okay? So, again, thank you, Council Lady Klauser.[881.12][881.12](LAUGHTER) Council Lady Klauser, my fellow council members, thanks again for all your support. You know, at first, I thought this was going to be like a campaign event, but I'm not running for three years, so let me just hit a few of the high spots that's going on in District D and across Missouri City. First of all, let me talk a little bit about mobility. If any of you have the pleasure, and I use that word loosely, of going down Sienna Parkway in the mornings or in the evenings, you know what a chore that can be and the amount of traffic that you experience on that roadway. Well, we have partnered with the Sienna TERS 3, Fort Ben County and Missouri City, and what we're in the process of doing, and I'm not sure if they've started the process yet, but they're looking at seven different areas where they can improve the access and the, the exiting from Sienna Parkway. They're adding some additional lanes, some additional turn, turn-ins, so with the, with the goal, obviously, of improving the, the mobility and the traffic congestion that we currently experience there. So, it's, again, it's a, about a $5 million project, and it's scheduled to be either, I can't tell if it's either starting in the spring of '22 to the fall of '22. So, it gives you some idea of the scope of the, of the project. And again, we're all looking forward to it, and I know the people who live on that side of town are really looking forward to some relief over on Sienna Parkway. The other thing on that side of town is if you, again, have the opportunity to go down Watts Plantation Road from Sienna Parkway down to Knights Road, you know that that's an accident waiting to happen in many cases. So, it's narrow, it's really heavily traveled. So, what Fort Ben County and we're doing is looking at improving the shoulders on the, on the roadway. We're not, we're not going to increase the size or the width of the part of the roadway, but we're going to extend the shoulders and also the resurfacing of that, of that roadway. And the city's share is about 2.23 million, and the total cost of the project is about $7 million. So, it's a fairly extensive construction project. There'll obviously be delays as we go through that, so please bear with the, the construction people and the engineers who are out there, knowing that when we're complete, it'll be something that will give a great relief, I think, to the travels along Watts Plantation. And this is going from Sienna Parkway all the way down to Knights Road, so it's fairly lengthy amount of roadway. The next thing that I got, I want to talk a little bit about is, is drainage. We have a situation in New Point Estates and Creekmont, which, if you're not familiar with it, that's at the far end of Missouri City, down by Darby Lane, where it goes into Arcola, and that's Long Point Creek. On the north side, that's been, been improved. But on the south side, which runs through Long Point, I mean, excuse me, through New Point Estates and through Creekmont, when we have high-water events, they, they experience a lot of, a lot of high, high water. So, working with Fort Ben County, the drainage people, they're coming in there and they're going to place improvements that will assist. It won't eliminate the high-water events that they have, but it will give relief to the, the, many of the homeowners in New Point Estates and also to Creekmont. So, we're looking forward to that. That's been in the works for, for quite a while, and it's, it's a slow process, but again, we're partnering with Fort Ben County and, you know, they're, they're great partners when we look at projects such as this. The additional item is, and I think both Councilman, Council Lady Sterling mentioned it, and I believe Councilmember Boni, the, the facade program that's, we're putting in for, or I think it's already there, now it's just a matter of taking the applications from the, the business owners along Texas Parkway and Cartwright Road. And it's something that's really, I think, going to be a real improvement. I'm most interested in it because of the, of the Texas, or the Cartwright Business Park on Cartwright and Cypress Point. They're, that's a going business park, but there's a lot of room for improvement, and they're going to be able, I think, to take advantage of some of the benefits that the city is going to afford those, and their small business owners, to be able to do things with their, the facade, or with the parking lot, or with the lights. So, we're really looking forward to that, and I'll put in a plug, because it's, you know, if you've ever been to Alex's Kitchen, that's where we're talking about. So, if you haven't had the opportunity, try it. Small business in District D, by the way.[1284.83][1284.83](LAUGHTER) The other thing we talk about is, of course, there's two multifamily developments going in in Town Center 3. It'll provide more than 500 apartments, and it's a mixed-use development. I think it's about 70 acres, if I'm not mistaken, isn't it? So, we're in the process of doing the engineering and looking at the opportunities there. So, again, that's, we already have Town Center 1 and Town Center 2, where the, the new cinema's going in. So, this is across the road on the Texas Parkway and the, excuse me, not Texas Parkway, excuse me, Fort Ben County, the toll road and Highway 6. So, I think we'll look for some additional developments out there. So, things are happening in District D, not just in B, so.[1355.83][1355.83](LAUGHTER) And, you know, with, with the bond referendum, there were a number of things, I'm sure, that some of those items will be touched on, but let me just put in a plug for the Freedom Tree Park. I mean, it's something that's really near and dear to Councilmember Boni and myself. We've been working on that park for probably six, seven years, and it's a reimagining of the, the park and, and the tree. The park's already there, but it's, you know, it, there's nothing there other than, than grass and ground, so we're going to reimagine that. So, we're really looking forward to spending some of that bond money and getting the Freedom Tree Park off, off of the, off the books and, and on the ground. One other thing, and again, this has nothing to do with the bond, but at Ridgeview Park, our HOA in Quail Valley donated $750,000 to the city so that they could build a splash pad, a $750,000 splash pad at Ridgeview Park. There are some other items that are improvements to the, to the park that came out of the bond fund, but that's, that's nothing in comparison to what we're looking at, at the, at Ridgeview Park from the, the development and the building of a splash pad for our kids. If you're not familiar with Quail Valley, you know, we really don't have a lot of amenities. We don't have any swimming pools, public swimming pools or things of that nature. So, what we've tried to do, and we've worked with the city, we, being the HOA, is to utilize the McNaughton Park. We've got a, a complex of playground equipment, and so we'll be adding that also to the Ridgeview Park. So, we're really looking forward to that, because, you know, Quail Valley is getting a little bit gray, if you will, and we need kids, and the only way we're going to get children in there and the younger people are to have amenities that, that are going to attract young families that'll come in there and bring their, their youngsters in and, and buy in Quail Valley. So, with that, again, this is, is not about me. This is about my friend and our, my compadre, if you will, Council Lady Klauser.[1531.33][1531.33](LAUGHTER) This is her show. She's, you know, it's been a privilege to work with her. She hit the ground running. She's a big advocate for small businesses, so I couldn't be more proud to say that I've worked with her, and she's, she brings a lot to the table and one that I know that she'll continue to do. So, with that, thank you.[1556.01][1556.01](APPLAUSE)
I'm going to write him a check and leave the amount blank. Very kind. All right, we are going to move the program along. Recently, my colleagues and I had the pleasure of being a part of the hiring process for our new city manager, Charles Jackson. And I want to take this time to thank our interim city manager, Bill Atkinson, for your leadership and guidance during the months that we did not have a city manager. We anonymous, unanimously hired Mr. Jackson and provided an opportunity for both of the finalists to meet with the directors of each of our departments, and we also hosted a community meet-and-greet for residents to ask questions and learn about each candidate. We look forward to working with Mr. Jackson. As I said earlier, his first day was yesterday, and he's still here. So, I want to welcome Mr. Jackson up to the podium to talk a little bit about his vision for the city. Let's give him a warm Missouri City welcome, y'all.[1629.12][1629.12](APPLAUSE)
Good evening, everyone. First of all, Councilwoman, Mayor Council, good evening. It is absolutely an honor to be here tonight and to have been selected as the ninth city manager for the great city of Missouri City, Texas. As Councilwoman said, today was my second day. I feel like I've been here about three months, but today was my second day. But we're already rolling on some stuff, and everything that we're working on right now that is going to be stuff that is going to make Missouri City even, an even greater city to call home. She talked a little bit about the hiring process, and I'm sure most of you in here kept up with the hiring process, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention once again, and just absolutely commend this mayor and city council for conducting such a thorough and well-thought-out and challenging interview process. And that was absolutely what it was. It was a process. It was a process that lasted over a period of weeks. It was a process that included online interviews, in-person interviews. It included a final two-day event here where we actually were interviewed by directors. We were interviewed by anybody in the community that wanted to show up, and we had to sit down with the council again and give them our used car sales pitch, because we're obviously used cars, and give them our used car sales pitch to, to convince them that we were the right person to come in here for the job. I've been in this business a long time, and I've watched local government for even longer, and I don't know that I could ever remember a process that was more transparent, a process that included more people in it, and a process that gave the people that wanted to be involved the opportunity to be involved, like the process that I saw here. I've never seen a process like that anywhere else in the nation. So, you guys, very good, very good process. Congratulations on, on a process that you guys are very proud of, because it was, it was well put together. Coming out of that process with the 7-0 unanimous vote of the city council to be the next city, city manager, kind of felt like it was more than just getting a job. It was a great accomplishment to go through such a rigorous process and to have your professional career fully vetted. Every question, everything they could think of, they had multiple opportunities to ask those questions, and to really dig in and find out who you were as a person and who you were as a manager. It just made it more than just being hired into a job. It made it something special. And then knowing that after that much vetting that I received a unanimous vote, that made it even more special. So, I really, really, really feel truly blessed and very humbled to be, to be here tonight to be able to speak to you guys. One of the major components of that interview process One of the major components of that interview process was a 30, 60, 90-day plan that each candidate was asked to submit to the council, and in those final two days, a lot of discussions revolved around that 30, 60, 90-day plan. As a new city manager, you're often asked that question, what is your vision for the city? Well, in a city, in a council manager form of government, you don't really get to have a vision. That's their job. They represent you, they get to have the vision. But as a manager, it's my responsibility to make sure that that vision comes to fruition. So, if I have a vision for what I'm going to do in my time in Missouri City, it's going to be to implement the will of the council and to make sure that the things that you're telling them that you want to see in your city get done, when they ask that they get And that's my commitment to, that was my commitment to the council, and that's my commitment to you guys here tonight, is to make sure that that vision that they bring forward is what we do here in Missouri City. From a management standpoint, there are certain things that you need to do though to help speed that process along. You cannot implement the vision of a council, or the will of a council, if you're not doing certain things and doing those things very well. So, there are some things that are not necessarily vision items, but they are management items that I will, that I'll talk about here, that are going to be very important coming into this job. The first one that I want to talk about is bringing stability to the city manager's office. The, over the last two years, choosing to up really the third city manager in a two-year period, it begins to look like a revolving door, and when it begins to look like a revolving door, it causes a lot of stress on staff, for one. It causes a very negative image to developers or to individuals that you would want to move into your city. And so, one of the most important things that I need to do quickly, and that we need to establish quickly, is stability back in that office, because we don't want the lack of stability to be counterproductive to moving the city forward. So, that is one of the primary goals, is to get that stability back in there. And I think that stability started very, very quickly with the open and transparent process that the council put together to hire the next city manager. I think that should, that should give all of you a sense of calm and a sense of understanding that they did the best that they could do to bring in the best person they could to make sure that that stability was brought back into that office. And that should be, and I know in talking to the staff members, that gave a bunch of the staff members a sense of calm, because it wasn't rushed, it wasn't something that they didn't get to participate in. It wasn't something that, just one day, they were told, okay, we've got a new city manager. It was, it was a drawn-out process, and they were, they were able to be part of it. So, that was very important. Another part of that, my responsibility, of course, is ensuring that city staff is accountable to the city council and citizens. We all work for you, and we all owe you our very best every day, and it's the manager's job to make sure that I'm holding everyone accountable to that responsibility. Another thing that's going to be very important, I think, is going to be being visible, ensuring that not only our staff are participating, participating in functions across the table in our city. I promise me, I promise you, you will see me out there. You'll see me out there in places that you've probably never seen a city manager show up before, because I'll be everywhere. I will, I will show up at events uninvited. Hope that doesn't bother anybody, but I think it shows a lot when somebody shows up. It's one thing if you show up and you're invited, it's another if you show up and you weren't invited. And that's something that's always been very important to me, is showing up when you're not invited. So, when you see me, come up and say hello, and let's talk about the things that you want to see happen in your city. Another important task that I have laid out in this first 30, 60, 90 days is laying the groundwork for fixing some of the disconnects in city government. Disconnects between departments, between departments and the administration, and between the staff and the elected officials. It all only works if you function as one team. You can't have a bunch of small pieces and truly achieve greatness. You have to have one single team working together, so that's going to be a focus as well. Another thing that's very important, if you're going to create a vibrant city and keep that city vibrant, is to start the process of building our leaders from within. That means that the employees that we have now, providing them training to make sure that they have the ability to advance and move up and become better at their jobs. And it also means creating an opportunity where we have young individuals that are graduating out of our high schools in this community, they can actually look at the city, and it's a potential career for them. I don't think we have that right now. A city becomes a second option or a leftover option, but we want to get it to a point where an individual who graduates from high school here can come in, go to work in the city, and there is a plan. There is a way for them to get from the lowest entry-level position in the city to the top seat, and there's a way for them to be trained, and there's a way, if they come in and they work hard and they do their job, we want to give them every opportunity we can give them, because it's important that we try to keep our, our kids here, because at the end of the road, if that person that's sitting in my seat was born and raised in Missouri City, they know more about Missouri City than anybody else does, and so they'll do a great job for their community. What else, another, another thing that's going to be important in this first 90 days is assessing operations in each department to make sure that we're operating efficiently and effectively, and in the processes that we find that aren't making some changes to those processes. Working diligently to make sure that we maintain, and not only maintain, but expand, our diversity and inclusion initiatives within the city. And one of the things I talked to the mayor and council was, was about one initiative that I want to bring in with an advisory committee, so we make sure that we are hearing from every part of our community, we make sure that everybody has a voice, and we make sure that we're not missing groups in our community and our city as we're, as we're making decisions and moving things forward. Working with economic development to raise the stakes. Lots of conversations during the interview process about economic development. Economic development's a big deal here, right? City's blowing up, growing fast, and I heard, don't bring another chicken place. We want no more chicken places. And I think that's one of the things we, I talked about with the council, it's one of the things that we've got to do as a staff. We need to focus on getting the things that everybody else wants, and we need to make it happen that they come here. We need to be the city that brings in whatever's not in the region right now. We need to be the city that brings that in, because we not only want to continue to develop and grow, but we want to bring in the things that are going to bring everybody else to our city to spend their money here, so people aren't leaving here and going to other cities to spend their money, and their restaurants, and they're not going to other cities to spend their money in their entertainment venues, whatever they have. We need to be building those things here so that we're getting everybody else's money coming in here. And then last, I think one of the most important things is, is making sure that we continue building and make sure that we maintain the trust in City Hall, and that's with our citizens, with our developers, and with those that want to, that want to be here in the future. If we're talking about people that are going to come in, they've got to have some confidence in what's hap, what's going on in this community to want, to want to live here. Of course, we don't, we're not going to get all that done in 90 days. I sure hope the council doesn't expect us to get all that done in 90 days, but it is going to be important that we lay the groundwork for all that stuff and get started with the right foundation, that these principles become our guiding factors, become the things that we focus on every day, and that's what will get it to the next level. Again, I want to thank Councilwoman Clouser for giving me the opportunity tonight to speak to you for a few minutes. I know without a doubt that I'm very blessed to be here. I look forward to visiting with each of you, and I really look forward to what lies ahead for all of us here in Missouri City. Thank you.
Thank you again, Charles, for, for those wonderful words, and I want you all to know that he's hit the ground running. We all received an email today that he wants to set up one-on-ones with us for next week, so he's interested in hearing us and continuing that, so thank you. Okay, so we are going, we have seven directors and two direct, department designees tonight, and we're going to hear from each one of them very briefly, and we're going to kind of do a pass the microphone. So, we will start with, you want to start? Aubrey Nettles, she is our Executive Director of Economic Development.
Good evening. My name is Aubrey Nettles. I have been with the city of Missouri City for about four months now, and have been really excited to hit the ground running with revitalization and redevelopment efforts along Texas Parkway and Cartwright Road, and they are doing really well, and I think you all will see a lot of activity within the next year. You'll also see economic development working diligently to add new restaurant opportunities or in local homegrown to big franchises, to our community as well. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Martin Russell, I'm the HR Director for the city of Missouri City, and I appreciate all of you being here tonight to try and get a better understanding of what we do as a city. A lot of the things that come out of my department, a lot of it is internal, meaning that my, my internal customers, which is our employees, are our greatest asset, not only to the city, but to you all as well. And one of the things that we have done in our department, especially since I've been here a little bit over two years, is restructure our benefits program that we offer our employees. And, and the reason why we did those things is that we were listening to our internal customers, and those internal customers is our employees. So, what we've done is, we went out to bid last year, and we restructured every, just about every program that we had and that we offered to employees. And with that, we saved the city almost $600,000 just this past year in savings that the city did not have to use in order to pay for those programs. This year, with the, with the help of our benefits advisors, we were capped at 10% of our health insurers that we were getting ready to, in this case, our health insurers went up almost 25%, but we were capped at 10% of that amount, meaning that we ended up saving a whole lot more money than we could have lost in the event if we didn't have to have that in place. And that was also based upon the, the restructure that we did and consolidate a lot of our programs, and also increasing our services to the city employees. And I could go on and on and on, because we have done a lot of work in our department. We've also implemented a employee informational tool called Alex that has actually helped employees better select what services, in this case, their health, dental, and benefits work best for them and their families. This has actually been a great tool. We've got a lot of good feedback from our employees and the utilization of that particular Over this past year, just to kind of give you an idea of some of our hiring that we've done for the city, we have also hired 47 new full-time employees and 17 part-time employees, which many of you don't see that from behind the scenes, but we have done a lot of work in our department trying to fill those vacancies that are in the city. Just to kind of give you a heads up, we are in the process for next year of hiring a risk manager, something that we haven't had at the city, that will concentrate on our wellness program. This is going to be, I think, a big deal for the city. We just recently received some money from UHC, which is dealing with our health, dental, and vision benefits for the city, but what it will do is, it will actually, this person, once they get hired into this position, will actually implement programs across departments, helping employees to be better able to have that work-life balance, but also provide them with opportunities to help them deal with the stress of working, you know, here at the city. Wellness programs are very good in providing that needed break, but also provide employees an avenue where they can actually, what they call a wellness, is to get well mentally and physically, do their positions on the job that they're in. Just to kind of give you those highlights, but I'll pass it on to Elena for her.
Good evening. My name is Elena Cordes, and I'm the Director of Financial Services for the city. I've been here for almost three years, and in addition to just managing the day-to-day finances of the city, one of our focuses for this year is going to be assisting with programming the bond funds from the 2021 bond election. So, I'm going to keep this short, because you're going to hear from me in a moment in regards to the bond election. So, I'm very happy to have you all here, and I'm very happy to be here to speak to you all.
Thank you. I'm Mike Marison, and most of you, I see a lot of friendly faces out there. I've, I've only been with the city almost 33 years, and I'm the youngest person of all these people, too. It's kind of weird, but some of the initiatives that we're going to continue is, we're going to continue to nurture our relationship with you all. You've heard me say in many of your few years, our best weapon against crime and the bad elements that may try to enter our city is you all, not country and mile, all this stuff is just for show. You're our best weapon, so we're going to continue to nurture those relationships. As we come out of COVID, and everybody starts having their H.O.A. meetings again, you'll start seeing us at those events also, it is important that we're having a job fair tomorrow. We are struggling, like most law enforcement agencies, to fill our ranks, and I don't mean just in sworn personnel, but I also mean in emergency telecommunications, dispatchers, as well as our detention officers. So, if you know anyone that's interested in starting a career, especially in our city, I know our city manager's really good at stress that, as he comes on board, if you know anyone that's interested in that or working for the city, we'll have a booth there, and we're the best department to come to work with, unless all these other people, this is not true, and they're going to come to you and say they're great, but if you know anybody that wants to go work for the police department, we'd be glad to have quality people, so please encourage anyone who comes out. You all know that you can reach me anytime, you can call me direct, all you do is look at the city website, you can make direct contact, we can go through a filter here in Missouri City. So, I look forward to working with you in the future, and thank you for coming out tonight. I'm going to pass it on.
I'm Sager Cole. I'm the Director of IT for the city of Missouri City. Our main focus is to make sure we provide customer service for our internal employees and also protect our infrastructure. I've been for about eight years, and I've enjoyed it.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Martel. I've had the pleasure of serving at Jureysco, one of your assistant city managers, about two and a half years. Shortly after I got here, COVID hit, and I can tell you that there is no better group of employees, staff, taking care of the city the last two and a half years with COVID hitting through the freeze last January, and then all the way to what we're doing right now with the bond committee and going through, from the citizenry being engaged with all that support through the COVID activity, of the citizenry being engaged with the bond committee. I certainly appreciate all of your support in moving the city forward. And with that, I'd just like to say, although we have about 15 members of the leadership team here, that means there's about another 365 or so out there that are taking care of you every day, so if you could just join me and give them a little round of applause in the seats, and I'm sure we could thank you.
I'm Bill Atkinson, Assistant City Manager. I've been with the community about 15 years, and through that time, seen a lot of growth, new opportunity created in Missouri City. Again, as the chief mentioned, I look around the room and I see residents and friends who I've made over the years, and with, through you, we've been able to build such a great community. And one thing I wanted to pass on that we found out this past week was that our police department has been recertified through the Texas Chiefs of Police Association for the fourth straight time, which I believe there's only a handful now of organizations that can make that claim. So, I just want to commend him, and again, those are the only things that we have to laud about. We have a lot of other achievements throughout the organization, and a lot to be proud about with Missouri City. So, again, I appreciate all the opportunity and working with all of you, and look forward to working with you in the future and helping Charles with the transition and moving forward. Thank you.
My name is Tyson Stunberg, I'm the General Manager at the Quail Valley Golf Course at the city center. COVID hit us hard in two different ways. Number one, it wiped out all of our social events, weddings, and food beverage operation, but the golf had a boom, and we went in two different directions at the same time. And now, we are looking to sustain the golfers that we gained in the last year and a half and find ways to keep them entertained and keep them coming back, and also rebuild and build back our events, and those are coming back. And just like the chief is looking for employees, we are too. I'm going to be at the job fair tomorrow morning. We've got a lot of part-time opportunities available, so if you know anybody who is looking for some extra side money or some weekend work, we have that, and chief, I'm sorry, we offer free golf if you work for us, so. We're also looking this year to learn more about how we integrate with our local hotels and tourism industry, and how we can learn and get more people to not only who are using our space to book hotel rooms, but also our partner entities and some of the activities that they offer, and getting more people into our hotels and increase our tourism here in Missouri City as well.
Good evening, everyone. I am Karen Baugh, and I say I've just been here about three weeks, and I'm very happy to be here. I'm filling in as a designee for Jennifer Gomez, and she's the Director for Development Services. We currently are managing six divisions for the city, and our primary goal, goals for next year will include three main things. The first would be technology. We are trying our best to make sure that we upgrade our web-based application and software for development services applications so that we can move forward in the 21st century, making sure that developers and residents can quickly do everything they need to for development services online. The second mile, milestone that we will work towards is communication. Communication and providing a lot more information online to the residents as to development activities and what's happening in the city regarding all activities development. Uh, and the last I would say is compliance. Compliance specifically with court enforcement. As you know, court enforcement deals with many different issues regarding things such as abandoned cars, high growth of grass, uh, just compliance. Having our residents as well as our development community stay in compliance with the city and where we're moving forward. So I thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Millie Orrez. I'm Division Chief in Missouri City. I'm currently representing Chief Martino's, uh, on business, trying to learn what we can do better as a fire department for the organization. So one of the things I always talk about is, uh, Missouri City is an I S O one, one of very few departments across the country that can have, uh, that designation and it's because it's a, a team. Everybody up here, uh, contributes to that I S O one. I've learned that, uh, in the three years that I've, that I've been a part of the city. So one of the things that, that we're here talking about, uh, we've been working on is Station Six. I know we, uh, talked about it a little bit earlier, but it's on, on pace to be completed in the beginning of April. So we've done a lot of work on the background, uh, hiring firefighters and promotions. Uh, we currently will be at the job fair also where, uh, are bringing on about nineteen firefighters in total, uh, to staff not only Station Six, but also for promotion, internal promotions will be moving up. So if, uh, you know anybody in the community that's looking forward to becoming a firefighter, wants to be a firefighter, just, uh, get them to talk to, come to the booth tomorrow at the job fair. Uh, talk to me and we'll get them on the right path, uh, to be a part of Missouri City and Missouri City Fire Department.
Hey, good evening. My name is T W Dyke. I have the pleasure of serving the city as your Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. Uh, Jason, our director, sent his regards this evening. He had a prior family commitment, so you get me tonight. Uh, just bravely, uh, heard a couple of comments that, uh, wanted to touch on what the Parks and Recreation Department does. Uh, in this past year, we recently became nationally accredited. Uh, and the reason that's a big deal is that means that we're doing a lot of things right by best practices and it's a reflection of how we serve you and our community. And there's less than one percent of these departments nationwide who can say that, so. Uh, with that as well, I just encourage you to get out and enjoy your parks, enjoy your facilities. Check out our Parks and Recreation Program and we'll see you at the Recreation Intensive.
Good evening. My name is Shashi Kumar. I serve as your Public Works Director and City Engineer. I've been in this role for about four and a half years. The main focus of this city council has been on infrastructure. The last survey that was done with the citizens, they said all year emphasis needs to be placed on public infrastructure. Over the last year, we've spent one and a half million dollars in fixing streets, what we call panel replacements. We've done sidewalk improvements worth two million dollars. While a lot of people were working from home, my team was out there fixing sidewalks and I was just getting the tabulating, the results for the year and give them over two million dollars worth of sidewalks spanning all across the city, including six hundred thousand alone in District A. I do not know of any other city of our size spending that level on sidewalk infrastructure. And I really commend the council for the support and my team who worked through this COVID period. Uh, also, as city engineers, we have the responsibility to review and approve all plans for new development projects. Obviously, the city is welcoming new development and economic growth. Along with it comes some challenges with the new projects, be it traffic or drainage. And my department makes sure that what we build is sustainable and the traffic and the drainage impacts are adequate and mitigated. There's a lot more investment we're making on public infrastructure as part of the bond program. Elena will be presenting if that, and I will be really backing on that program as well. But again, thank you for your time and Councilor of Congress, thank you for the opportunity. I think we want to hear from our legal department as well.
Good evening, everyone. My name is E Joyce E. Emo. I am the City Attorney for the City of Missouri City, Texas. I am actually a product of this great community and it is truly an honor to serve. My division is an internal services division. We provide legal services to the council, boards, and commissions as well as staff. Some of the projects we have worked on this past year include facilitating the charter election. Hopefully, most of you participated in that and the implementation of charter revisions. We also participated in the, uh, limited purpose annexation of certain portions of C N A for the purposes of providing fire services. So those are just a few items we've worked on. One of the projects we'll be working on in the next year is redistricting. So I'm sure I'll be seeing several, uh, of you at those meetings in the next year. So with that, I know you all are probably on a tight, uh, time schedule. I will turn it back over to the Honorable Councilman Plaza. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want, I want to publicly say thank you to all of our directors. They work so hard. Oftentimes, they are here during the day, at night, and it just seems like it goes on and on, but they show up with a smile and we appreciate you and I appreciate your preparation for this meeting. Um, we're gonna, we have two more, well, one more portion and then I'm gonna close things out. So thank you all for hanging tight. I do, I did see our state representative, Ron Reynolds, enter the building. So I want to say thank you for being here. Uh, our, our judge, uh, K P George was here. I also see, um, H A R in the house, uh, Tremaine, she's in the back. Um, and so we're gonna move things along. Uh, in the November general election, the bond referendum was approved by vote, by voters. I would like to commend the bond committee for doing such a great job disseminating the in, in, in information to the community. Uh, if you are, were a part of the bond committee, if you would please stand up. Thank you so much for your service. I will now introduce you to, uh, our city staff members that will present to you the next steps to be taken and the first projects to be rolled out. Elena Portis, Director of Financial Services, and Director of Public Works, Shashi Kumar. Um, if you all will just kind of go through everything as briefly as you can, but diligently. Thank you.
Okay, good evening again. Clicker. Okay, so I'm gonna try to go as fast as I can. Um, I do have some, I will call it like education material so that you can understand a little bit about, um, what the bond process is like as far as issuing debt. Uh, but before going through that, I wanted to provide a little bit of history. As mentioned, uh, we did have citizen engagement during this process and that included a bond exploratory committee, which, um, we have seen. I think we have a few, three people that are here. They are appointed by the city council. Uh, the committee worked together, uh, to go through a lot of the projects that were submitted by, uh, staff. Uh, they held town halls and they provided a package to the city council as far as a recommendation for the bond, uh, package. Uh, council ordered the bond election and of course the voters, uh, authorized us issuing debt. And so there are three propositions. Uh, Proposition A was streets. Proposition B, facilities, and C was parks. And so most passed, um, with almost seventy percent of the votes. Now these, uh, uh, propositions, uh, of course, they were broken down into the three different topics, uh, but the total amount was eighty-five million, eight hundred fifty thousand. And it's divided amongst, uh, the different propositions as follows. Streets, approximately fifty-one point six million. Facilities, eleven point two, and parks, twenty-three million. Okay, so we don't get all of this money all at once. Um, I know that, um, we all look at our finances, we think about our property tax rate and, and to ensure that we minimize the impact on the property tax rate, the debt is issued over a certain period of time. And so right now we have it calendared as, um, a five-year schedule. Um, and so what happens is, um, we have to calculate our property tax rate, uh, during the budget process. And our fiscal year is October to September. So around April to June, we're looking at what debt we may issue. Um, and then we calculate our property tax rate based on that. Um, and so for the first debt issuance for the 2021 bond election, we're looking at issuing twenty million dollars. That process will start in July. Uh, when we went through the process of the bond election, uh, we came up with a maximum debt service rate of seventeen five seven cents. And so when we issue debt, we want to make sure that we're also retiring debt. So we're paying off some of our bills and then we're getting more debt, but then that kind of minimizes the impact that it has on you and your tax rate. So we believe that we'll have cash at hand from the 2021 bond election in October of, uh, 2022. Uh, and then construction will begin on some of the projects and we'll go through the C I P process, uh, in a moment. And then we'll have this process for the next four years where we're gonna look at the tax rate. We're gonna say, okay, this is the amount that we have, um, as far as the principal and interest payments that we're gonna have in the upcoming year, and then we'll issue debt again. So we're looking at, again, uh, the first issuance for 2021, uh, series being twenty million dollars, or the 2021 bond election being twenty million dollars. The second, uh, in the second year being approximately twenty-one point five million. In the third year, nineteen point three. In the fourth year, ten point four. And in the fifth year, fourteen point five. So again, we aren't getting all the money all at once. If we were to do that, property tax rates would be really high. Okay, next we have the, uh, C I P program. So April to June is approximately when we program the projects. Um, it's a part of the C I P process, which is a part of the budgeting process. Uh, we have different assessments that have been done throughout the years, uh, which includes the parks assessment, the facility needs assessment, and the pavement and sidewalk, uh, evaluation. And so using this information, department directors then submit their requests as far as the different projects to be funded. And we already have guidance as far as the types of projects that will be, um, included in the bond election because that was a part of the process as far as identifying them. We then look at, uh, funding options. Uh, it's possible that there could be additional funds that we have outside of bond proceeds. So we do have bond proceeds. Uh, we have pay-as-you-go. If there's additional funds that are available within our general fund, we do, uh, fund some projects in that manner. And then we also have impact fees. Um, of course, we're talking about the bonds, so you know the bonds will be, uh, part of this process. Uh, then we go ahead and program some of these capital projects and Shashi will be talking about that in just a moment. Um, and then we submit that information to the council with the C I P and the capital improvement budget and it gets, uh, reviewed and adopted hopefully by, uh, late September. So one last slide before bringing Shashi up. Uh, the bond sale process, again, you know, it's, it's not something that's really quick. It's about a one hundred twenty-day cycle. So as soon as we, um, make that determination as far as the amount of debt that we want to, uh, that we want to issue within a year, we work with our financial advisor to begin producing all of the documents that are required for issuing debt. And a lot of it is, you know, financial information. It includes, um, uh, financial information about the city so that those that are looking to invest in the city can determine whether or not they want to buy our bonds. So we have something that's called a preliminary official statement that we have to prepare. We also have a bond rating agency that comes in, looks at our, uh, finances, our, uh, fiscal health, and determine how they want to rate our bonds, which then impacts our interest rates, which if we have a really good rating, our interest rates are lower and then our property taxes are lower based on the amount that we're paying when it comes to principal and interest. Uh, then we go to council with an ordinance where they state, you know, this is the amount that, um, we are going to authorize at this point in time as far as issuing. We go through the pricing process where we have underwriters say, okay, this is the amount that we'll pay for your bonds. This is the interest rate that you'll pay, and then, uh, close and delivery. So this is a one hundred twenty-day cycle, so it, it takes time. Um, and as you saw on the, uh, prior slide, it's something that we believe we will start with the 2021, uh, bond election, uh, funding in July of 2022. And so at this time, I will turn it over to Shashi to provide a little more information.
Thank you, Elena, and I will just, uh, go over the infrastructure piece of this bond program. And as Elena mentioned earlier, there's fifty-one plus million dedicated just for streets, mobility, and traffic. And again, what are those projects that we're gonna be doing? Uh, we will be doing total street reconstruction. I did talk to earlier about the program where, where we have, we go fix the streets. If it's not ready for total fixing, we do what's called panel replacement and we have two and a half million dedicated in this current year to do that. But what these mobility projects are intend to do is rebuild the entire streets. For example, Ashmont and Gregory were rebuilt. And we're looking at, if you look at the dollar allocated there with the contingencies, roughly about forty million dollars for reconstructing streets. And roughly about twenty-five of that is local streets. And we do have Fort Bend County that's building or rebuilding some major collector roadways. And we have a funding contribution of about fifteen million dollars dedicated to that. When somebody else comes to the table and brings in a project where they can pony up fifty percent of the money, we want to leverage your dollars and we are dedicating about fifteen millions to that. And again, this is over a period of four to five years. The next one is landscape improvements around major corridors. The one that you've seen on Texas Parkway and Cartwright. We may have some opportunities come up on ten ninety-two and other locations. And this is for landscaping the major corridors, which is vital for economic development as well. And as and when, as the city continues to grow, we have a demand for traffic signals. We see three locations in Lake Olympia and the other one in Highway Six. Uh, the next thing what we're looking at is, when, if we are not adding any more roadways or widening roadways, how do we move traffic? There is technology out there, what's, what we call smart city initiative or adaptive signals. Your typical signals has preset timings, but the adaptive signals looks at the traffic volume. There are sensors out there on the pavement that detects the volume of traffics and adjusts signal timings. So we want to implement this in some of our busy, busy corridors where you, where we see a rush in traffic. It could be a school zone or it could be an entertainment facility that's sending more traffic and we have some monies dedicated for that. Of course, we're upgrading our signal cabinets to meet all this and, uh, just roughly just for streets, mobility, and traffic, again, we got fifty-one million dollars dedicated. I think one of the questions that you all are mostly interested is, is my street's gonna be built? Now, again, as part of this bond program, we did a payment assessment citywide. There are six hundred lane miles of streets citywide. And the red that you see there are the worst streets that needs to be fixed first. And guess what? Those were the streets that were built earlier. A lot of our streets are concrete streets. They've served forty, fifty years, but it's now time to replace. But again, we have the dollars today. The worst streets that we have to replace is roughly about one hundred and ten million. As you know, we don't have that kind of money. We have roughly about twenty-five million dollars to fix local streets. So what do we do? We find the worst of the worst streets that we can address. And how do we do that? Based on this payment assessment, we get a score for each of these streets, what, what we call the P C I index, Payment Condition Index. Further, me and my team have literally walked and rode all these streets and we're coming, we're shortlisting some of the candidate projects across the city. It could, it's District A, B, C, D. And what I'm tossing you here is a map where we're going through that process. As Elena mentioned, the money is gonna be in our coffers come next fall. So we are already in the process of seeing what streets are in the worst condition and needs to be rebuilt. And again, everything is not gonna be built on year one. It's gonna be staggered. So we're going through the exercise and I have some potential candidate projects in District A, B, C, and D. And the process is, we will come back to the council as part of our next annual budget, identify particular projects. Again, roughly twenty million will be year one. And again, there are streets, there are traffic, there are facilities, there are parks, and we'll be identifying what goes first. And again, it's priorities based on the severity and the need. And we'll go through the process as we build these projects. Uh, the, the magenta line that you see there is where, uh, the landscaping corridors are. That's where we have dedicated some money. The orange line that you see there is where the Fort Bend County Mobility Partnership projects are. These are primarily along Cartwright, Lexington, uh, Nitro Road, and Watts Plantation. And the green corridor that you see there, pretty much our major corridors, which is ten ninety-two, Cartwright, and Texas Parkway, and this is where we're looking at the smart city initiative. Uh, again, we had eleven point two millions roughly allocated in the facilities projects. Uh, and again, on the facility side, we have three categories. Uh, again, one is A D A compliance. This is the American Disability Act. About two and a half million life safety issues. This could be fire alarms, security systems. Life safety issues, this could be fire alarms, security systems, this is buildings across the city. Remodeling expansion, the city is growing, so is the needs for the departments. Uh, I think Tyson is gonna talk about the golf course maintenance facility that is needing to be replaced. And again, the funding budgeted for facilities is 11.2 million. Again, this will be spread across four or five years. With that, Tyson, you wanna hit the uh, golf course? Thank you.
Thank you, Shashi. Um, one of the projects that was earmarked in this bond election was the rebuilding of the golf course maintenance facilities. Uh, we're all familiar with the fact that the city bought the golf course a while back. And they did a lot of renovations to some of the golf course. They did a, replacing, they built the city center, which is a beautiful facility. However, nothing was done with the original uh, maintenance facilities. And because there was many years of deferred maintenance before the city took over, this is what we are ending up with today. So these are, these are the conditions of the facilities today. This is not anything that is um, being portrayed here. Uh, this building actually is still being used. Uh, there will be people working in here tomorrow morning. Uh, but we, we want to do is we want to tear down all those buildings and rebuild uh, a safer, more economical and a better facility for us to operate in in the long term. We can do that on the current site. Uh, we do also have some environmental issues that we want to take care of. We've got some underground storage tanks that we can eliminate. We can pull those out and reduce some liability there as well for the city. So those are all part of the projects for the facilities for the golf course maintenance. And I think we're gonna go to parks next.
Okay. So as part of the parks projects of the bond issue, uh, we basically had five dedicated park system uh, projects, if you, if you will, as well as a couple others that were classified under the Parks and Recreation. Uh, the first one is Stamo Sports Park, estimated 10 million. Uh, if you've been out to this, this park, uh, it's in dire need of an upgrade. Uh, it's well past its useful lifespan and rather, it's, it's to the point where it's almost, uh, your typical repairs would be kind of throwing dollars away. They're, they're at a point where they need to be replaced. Uh, and currently, it's just for baseball and softball. This plan is, I'll show you in just a moment, would make it a multi-sports venue and attract a much larger, larger user group. Uh, Freedom Tree, three and a half million. Uh, Councilman Boni, uh, he alluded to earlier, our Park Path Program, which is the process of converting DG or decomposed granite trails, which are very high maintenance uh, to concrete, similar to the Oyster Creek Trail. If you've been on the Edible Arbor Trail, that's one I'm referring to. Uh, Bicentennial Park is in need of renovation, just upgraded amenities. And we estimate about a 500,000 for that. Uh, Tyson has some La Quinta Golf Course renovations, which were under the Parks and Recreation portion of the bond, as well at two and a half million, and then contingency and bond issuance. Uh, real quick slide about Stamo Sports Park. Uh, it's been identified as a high priority in both of our, our 2015 master plan as well as the 2021 Parks Master Plan that we are currently working on. Uh, estimated cost is about 15 million with a tentative $5 million commitment from Fort Bend County. Uh, it's basically, as I mentioned, designed to transform that from a baseball and softball only to multiple use. And that's baseball, cricket, soccer, softball, outdoor pickleball, if you're not familiar with that. It's, it's uh, it's kind of like ping pong and tennis combined on a little bit smaller court. Uh, but it's a lot of fun. Basketball courts, picnic areas, playgrounds, a bike pump trap, track that has like hills and different features that are fun to ride on, walking trails and other infrastructure improvements such as drainage. Uh, enhanced, uh, the Freedom Tree Park, which was also mentioned earlier. Uh, there's two portions of this and I'm gonna speak really loudly real quick just to explain what's going on here. So there's two portions to this slide, this one to that one. So this is Freedom Tree Park, this is Freedom Tree. And this is an undeveloped portion right across the street, which is right now, it's just being mowed and open space and grass. Been that way for years. We got the plan and the design and we've been working with the community and a community, a citizens group on design elements and what they'd like to see in this park in the future. So that's the point we are. Uh, this is a proposed trail connection, which goes up to Community Park. So we connect both of those parks together. Uh, there's a lot of different features in there, but it's uh, one project we're very excited about. Park Path Program. This just breaks down all the different parks of what the cost estimates were. But in total, uh, it comes up a little over $2 million and we would do this in phases. Ridgeview Park, it's the oldest park in our park system. Uh, on our needs assessments, our master plan, um, identified all kinds of needs. These pictures just are up there to kind of illustrate the, the disrepair. Uh, the asphalt path out there, it's breaking up. It's hard to, it's hard to maintain that. The restroom, if you've ever been in that restroom, uh, you probably don't want to come back. But there, there's a number of different amenities we need to upgrade and range out there. And that's just part of the lifespan of parks and parks amenities. And then finally, uh, Bicentennial Park, uh, also identified in previous master plan. Uh, it's part of the plan for improving Fifth Street Corridor, um, with city, Stafford, Fort Bend County. Um, you can see the condition of like the water fountain, some of the picnic tables are in some poor condition. But we would replace the playground, the fencing, uh, you know, correct the ADA access to the playground as well. And we estimate about $500,000.
I'm back. Uh, one of the parks projects on here is some improvements to the La Quinta Golf Course. Similar to a, a physical structure, a building, a golf course has timelines for the amenities on it. The golf, uh, the sand bunkers don't last forever, the greens don't last forever. And all those types of amenities do tend to um, wear down. So one of the things that we want to do to increase the amount of play, increase people coming to enjoy our great city and the golf course, is to make improvements to our golf course. And these are some of the improvements that we would like to see. I'm glad to talk to you in person if you have further questions. I can tell that Councilmember Klauser is ready to wrap things up.
No, really? Thank you all. Thank you all for y'all's patience. Um, so in closing, as we um, move the city, Missouri City forward, we continue to be focused on economic development. I just want to go over a few last highlights and then I'm gonna let y'all go. Um, I want to share with you our sales tax revenue 2021 versus 2020. Our actual sales tax collections in fiscal year 2021 increased 1.7 million over the prior year. This represents a 15% increase from fiscal year 2020 collections. The largest area of growth was the, in the area of internet sales at 36.5%, followed by construction and manufacturing. And then it was retail and restaurants and entertainment. We, as a council, have many goals and one of our goals was to form two new committees. And those committees uh, focused on two important corridors within the city. The Texas Parkway Corridor Advisory Committee and our Small Business Advisory Committee. If you are a part of the Small Business Advisory Committee, would you please stand up? This was my baby when I came on board and I am proud to say we have two of our business owners that are here today that serve. We are working to make sure our businesses have representation and they have a platform. We don't want to guess what they need. We want us to, them to tell us what they need. And we appreciate our Executive Economic Development Director, Aubrey Nettles, for guiding that ship. The city has many different partnerships with many of our local officials. We will continue to do that. Um, this year, me and my colleagues launched a social media campaign uh, called Each Shop and Play. Do you all remember seeing any pictures or, um, and we want to continue that. We want to make sure that our residents know about our local businesses and continue to support um, our local businesses. And then when you do so, make sure you um, take pictures and hashtag it and put it on your social media because you just never know who needs to hear about that great restaurant or that wonderful park that you, uh, that you just visited. Uh, on Veterans Day, the city unveiled the Veterans Memorial with each branch of the United States Military represented. This memorial was well overdue and the staff worked with several partners, including local veterans, to complete this project. The memorial's design centers around a five-point star with an eternal flame and a fountain in the center. Despite the COVID-19 pandemic, Missouri City kept pushing forward, not allowing the pandemic to hold new business owners back from opening their businesses. We had 146 certificates of occupancy and 186 permanent occupancies issued in 2021. We are, we are moving forward, aren't we? We are grateful to have these businesses choose the Show Me City. The city also experienced an ice storm, uh, and many were without power, but we stayed strong. Niagara donated pallets of water, 10 pallets of water. And many of us council members delivered those, um, delivered water and food directly to some of our residents that could not get to us. This city is great. There are many things to do and see. And we want to continue to have Missouri City as a great and safe place to work, live and play. We have a lot to be thankful for. And as your at-large council member, I want to continue to serve you. We have grown in many ways, making all of us a part of history. I would like to take, to thank the citizens, the stakeholders, city staff and the business owners for their continuous support. I also want to thank Niagara Water and Uncle Honey's for the refreshments tonight. Be sure to follow us on our social media outlets, on Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor, LinkedIn, Instagram and YouTube. I want to thank our communications team so much for their diligence and working with me. Uh, we had plenty of phone calls, plenty of emails, a lot took place to get this ready. But I wanted to make sure that you, as the resident, um, know what is going on in your city, an overview of what we've done this year and what's ahead. It's all about the transparency. Um, I want to say thank you so much for joining us tonight. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to your family and God bless Missouri City. Thank you so much for joining us. If, if you all have any questions for our directors, you may come up and ask them. Otherwise, have a good night and be safe. Thank you to my colleagues.